All right, welcome.
I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with public comments on agenda items only. Nope. All right, if there's no public comments there?
I'm wondering if there's not too, because I'm looking at the audience here. We, the board could perhaps move that personnel agenda up a little earlier.
Sure.
If that's okay, and so I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. With the weather and everything out there tonight, so.
Yep, that's fine.
Seven eight.
Seven eight, all right, great, nice. Board Action Personnel Consent Agenda. All right, let it be resolved to the Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools hereby approves the attached personnel agenda. So move.
Sag it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just before we finalize that piece, and the board before, just, we have two, you know, all the appointments are important, but just want to highlight two of those this evening. So at the middle school campus here, we have identified our principal move forward with Jen Mangoli, and she has been the interim principal so far this year. And so effective tomorrow, we will be, Jen will be the principal here at the middle school and obviously moving forward through the year. So congratulations, Jen in middle school. And we have at the high school, so I see Mr. Bear is here this evening, I think. So Mr. Bear will be enjoying, I'm sure, his retirement, doing lots of things. So all those amazing years, one, Mr. Bear, we get a chance to talk to him a little bit later in the spring when we talk about our retirees. But tonight, Pete Rodriguez is here, and Pete will be our principal leading the high school. So, Mr. Rodriguez, thank you, sir, welcome for your service. Thank you. And if it'd be all right, after this approval, we can just take a quick timeout and just shake hands and let the folks go. That'd be great, thank you.
Yep, we already have plates.
Thanks, Paul, just a quick timeout. All right, so we'll go ahead and the safety and security update. I'm going to ask Dan if he could come forth in there. We have a couple of folks that he'll introduce, in just case we have some follow-up or background questions and stuff. So thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Blanch, Somers Community. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to have some comments about safety and security in our district. So tonight I have with me John Laplaca, CEO Valteras. I have Lieutenant Mike DeMeo from the Western County Police Department. He's currently in charge of the SRO program there. And if there are some questions later, I might direct some of them to my partners here. So those of you who don't know me, my name is Dan Carrato. I am your Safety and Security Coordinator with the Somers School District. Back in the summer of 2018, just before I started with district, Safety and Security Task Force was brought together by this district. There are many recommendations that were generated from those meetings with the task force. Many of them are listed on the infograph that's up on the screen. Just want to make a few points on each of those icons if I could. Starting with the one very top, 12 o'clock. All our buildings are monitored 24/7 for a host of issues, including fire, lockdown, burglar alarms, power outages, technology issues. Notifications are made to our monitoring system, who covers that. And then if an issue crops up, they will notify the people that are responsible for covering those, whether it's police, fire, EMS, or one of our building staff. Next one going clockwise, our chart up there. Last year, one of the projects we worked on was providing lockdown kits for all of our classrooms and spaces. So those lockdown kits are in the event that we have a significant situation that requires classrooms or office spaces to be locked down for a significant period of time, then this will be available to people in those spaces. The kit's comprised of bucket, toilet seat, tarp, duct tape, hand sanitizer, and deodorizer that goes in the bottom of the unit. So these, this would be used mainly if there was a, for sanitary purposes and for privacy for that situation. Continuing around, Somers has a very secure visitor management system in place to screen visitors that are coming to our buildings. All visitors are required to check in at the main entrance through our security vestibule. They're issued a visitor tag identifying that they're a visitor to the building before they're allowed in. And if they're here to see somebody, one of the teachers or a staff member, those people are called ahead of time to let them know that they have a visitor coming to see them. Next, part of the last safety and security bond, it included an upgrade on our camera systems. So when I started back in 2018, we had about 70 kind of low-definition cameras that we had in our buildings. And now we have 291 high-definition, zoomable, in-and-out cameras and eight license plate readers. So the cameras are monitored at different times of the day by a number of different people, including folks in the security vestibule, myself, our SROs are all taking a look at those during the daytime. Talking about the SROs in our district, as we continue on, we have one assigned to each school building. Somers is one of two districts in Westchester that has a, an SRO assigned to each of those school buildings. SROs provide a police presence during the school day, but not only that, they're also part of our building emergency response and safety teams. We have been lucky to have consistent officers assigned to our schools, which allows for developing trust and understanding between students, faculty, and staff. Part of our safety and security bonds, safety film, as we continue on, was added to most of the lower-level interior and exterior windows. This makes the simple breaking of that glass to try to gain entry much more difficult for an intruder, whether it's the classroom or an exterior window. This is another way of buying time for the police to locate, identify, and then respond to whatever threat is there at the building. We now have an incident command center where we have a number of cameras for each of the buildings that are constantly up on monitors that are in my office, which is right through that door. Suspicious activity can be identified and quickly relayed to building administrator or SRO. Command center is connected to a backup generator and is able to be operated during power or no power. Won't make any difference, that room will always be able to be used in an emergency. Back in March of 2023, we worked in conjunction to Western County Police Department, Westchester County Emergency Services, to conduct a district-wide three-hour training for faculty and staff. One half of the training was titled CRAZE, C-R-A-S-E. That stands for civilian response to an active shooter event. And the other half consisted of stop-the-bleed training. We have door alarm sensors on all of our exterior doors. That was also part of that recommendation that came out of the Safety and Security Task Force. They've been operating since last fall. They're active during the school day. If an alarm goes off, a notification of the door alarm goes to the building administrator, the building SRO, head custodian. And also, they only get their own building alarms. Myself, Chris Plutania, and Chris McCartney, we get all of them all the time. So we are always able to identify when, I see Chris shaking his head, there are quite a few sometimes. But those are, once we have one, somebody, a staff member or SRO is, will look at that. I'll also check the cameras when they come in. I just want to, you know, my, I feel my job there is to make sure that we don't have a student leaving the building. If we do, I know Mr. Rodriguez has gotten calls from me before saying that we just had an alarm, and it looks like we had a couple of students that went the wrong way. A New York state requirement for each of our buildings is to have a combination of 12 emergency drills each year. This consists of eight evacuation drills and four lockdown drills. There's also a mandated early dismissal drill that requires students to dismiss 15 minutes early that is required by the state. And our district is always in compliance with those required drills. I did skip one, there is a, the electronic access control. So all district employees are issued an ID swipe card. So with that swipe card, that allows them to gain entry to whatever the building is there's assigned to. We do have some overlap where folks who work in different buildings have access to those buildings to make sure they can take care of their responsibilities. This access control allows the ability for employees for specific buildings, we can do, dial it into specific groups of doors or even individual doors for people to have access to. It also allows for immediate access denial to an employee separated from employment from the district, or if ID badge or access card is lost somehow, we can just deactivate those and then they're not a concern as far as somebody using them to gain entry. Another recommendation from the task force was lockdown buttons to be added to all of our buildings. So each building has between five and seven lockdown buttons that are placed in the main office, security vestibules, SRO offices. And they can, in the event of a lockdown being required, just press the button and within a couple seconds, that button will initiate a lockdown system, our lockdown system. There are also a couple of other ways that we can initiate a lockdown. One is by inserting a code into the phone. That is one way. Another way is there is a computer program that some of our district administrators and building administrators have access to. They can use that. There's also a cellphone app called Informacast that can be used. The last two, the computer program and the cellphone app are, not as many folks have access to those particular methods. The lockdown system we currently have in place is most definitely advanced technology compared to what a lot of districts have currently. Gives all faculty and staff the ability to quickly put the building into lockdown in the event of a serious threat. The speed in which a building is capable of locking down is incredibly important as far as saving lives of the building occupants in a critical incident. By granting the ability for all faculty and staff to act in a critical time, however, you also have a greater opportunity for human error to factor in. I know in a few weeks that led up to our holiday break, we had three accidental activations. They were the first three accidental activations we had since we have installed the system. Since that first event on November 30th, I have had substantial conversations with, with building, district administration, and our building safety teams. I've also been working with my team at Alteris, Westchester County Police Department, and our safety technology vendors, Deautomation, to try to reevaluate our current safety plans that we already have in place. Several suggestions were developed on how to improve different aspects of our lockdown protocols and procedures. Thursday, we had a district safety team meeting. We called it a little bit early because we felt that we had such important topics that needed to be covered when it came down to these accidental activations, that I wanted to have everybody incorporated into some decision-making there. That team is made up of district administrators, law enforcement, Board of Education, a couple of folks here, and myself, and other community members. We reviewed and analyzed some suggestions to try to determine if there was a change that was necessary for us to make. Once we come up with a final decision on some of these changes to be made, we will implement them as quickly and efficiently as we can. Faculty and staff will be provided necessary training to be familiarized with any new procedures that we do come up with. And we've already started the process on a couple of things. Chris, if you could scroll up a little bit more. The last thing I just want to talk about is that bottom piece, upgrade in progress. It's something we are currently working on now. After meeting previously with our district safety team, the idea of a critical, of critical response graphing was introduced. This is a mapping system that will assist the law enforcement with responding to critical incidents. The idea is to integrate our building floor plans with locations of our cameras and other critical infrastructure within the building, and put all this information into one platform that the police can have access to in the, in an actual live event. This will allow for more efficient response for police officers, particularly those who are not familiar with our buildings. It's almost like a grid. So when you're looking at a building, you can say, it's almost like Battleship, go to G5. It's in the, and they can just go to that space, that area on the grid. Whether it's, if you just say, go to the cafeteria, people, officers who are not, who are not familiar with our district may not know where to go. If you tell them to go to G5, that will bring them to the area right to where they need to go. So I think that will help in law enforcement response. So that's what we're working on right now. And if there's any questions for the board, I'm ready.
What I, what I guess I would say, Dan, see if the board has any questions. I can't thank enough our partners with the Westchester Police Department. You've said before about our school resource officers. They have been with us for many years, some of them, and the ability for them to create relationships with the children, to create relationships with the faculty and with, with our families is something that I don't think we can underestimate. We see those sort of resource officers very active through our schools. And so to have those individuals in our schools every day is certainly something that has been a great benefit to us. And the relationship that I've seen from, you know, the little guys to the older guys, there's a true relationship. So now our children are very comfortable with the caring school resource service we have. They can approach those officers to have conversation with. So again, that didn't happen overnight, but now where we are a few years down the road, it's there. They're known and seen as a support mechanism inside of our schools. So again, I want to thank the Westchester Police Team for doing that. And they're always pointing us in the right direction to, here's some updated training, here's some opportunities to do that. I know your team at the Alteris does the same thing, too. So, and I continue to see the ongoing great collaboration between the different departments of law enforcement as well as well of terrorists. I, I don't feel like we're behind the stage. Actually, I received a communication today that was talking about some of the recent events that are hitting the nation and the spotting pieces. We're getting ahead of the curve here. Have your technology team look out for this thing. So I just can't thank you enough in your leadership, as well as our partnership with Alteris and the Westchester Police Department. So, so thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
I got a quick question, it might be for count. The SROs, how often do they, like, recertify or go through the active shooter training?
Usually.
Can you go to the mic?
Oh, sorry.
See, I was trying not to do it again to the mic.
So regards to the active shooter training or training in those kind of events, they go through usually at least annually for actual active shooter training. We call it alert training. It's craze, it's a police version of CRAZE. That's at least once a year. And they also, in addition to that, go to another block or two of obstruction, so, twice a year. And they do, they qualify firearms twice a year. So we're, our, our department is very, we're very fortunate that they're very training-heavy, and they're forward-leaning in that regard. We send officers over the country to train. They have no problem doing that. And they're very supportive of myself and the SROs. If we require, or if we want training that's not even required, they will, they'll provide that to us. It's just a matter of scheduling and stuff like that. But they're, they're, they're very proactive with our training. And we're, in fact, we're going to do, so we scheduled for Martin Luther King Day, because there's no school in session. We're going to go to a local school, myself, all the SROs, and we're going to participate in the scenario-based active shooter training and, and first-day training, stuff like that. And that's in addition to the yearly training and the bi-annual training they do already.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Miguel. Thank you, board. Thank you, thank you. All right, so I think the next piece we're off to is our January special education report. So I know Miss Alcans coming up, and I think, Chris, are you okay to do the PowerPoint? Thank you, Chris, thank you.
I have it up on my own computer, too, because, you know, sometimes the eyesight to there, we don't always know. So thank you for giving me some time tonight to talk about special education programs and data. What I hope to do tonight is talk about two things. One, our current data and needs in the district and some things going on. And then, two, the state indicators that are performance indicators that the state asks us to report on, some yearly, some periodically. Current, oh, can you forward it? Thank you. The, the current numbers of students, so for this year, we have 492 students with IEPs. That is just in district K through 12 in our four buildings. This chart represents how many stu-, what percentage of students of those 492 students are classified in each of the 13 categories that the state allows on IEP. You can see from this that learning disability is about a third of our students', speech and language impaired and other health impaired, each about 25%. And then we have autism, emotional disability, and then some others like orthopedic impairment, visual impairment, multiple disabilities. These ratios of students and these numbers, these percentages have remained pretty standard over time. Next, what I'd like to show, oh, sorry, what I wanted to say, can you go back one time? Sorry, Chris. So tonight when I'm talking, I'm only talking about students with IEPs. There are also students that have other needs under 504 accommodation plans. So the 492 students I'm speaking of have IEPs. That's based on standardized testing, going through the Committee on Special Education, looking at how their testing shows commensurate with their peers, and if there are any areas of weakness. And if there are, then we look at what classification category might be applicable, and then we create goals together with the family and whatever programming needs there are. We have annual reviews for all of those students every year. We talk about areas of growth and areas of continued need. And there's Part 200 regulations of New York State law that help guide that process. Students are reevaluated every three years with that same testing. It can happen sooner if we feel like a student is ready to be dismissed, because that's the process by which they do that, which is how they become declassified and no longer need services, is through that testing. Again, hopefully showing growth in average scores. Thanks, Chris. So this chart shows classification rates for the PMW Boce's districts over the last two years. You will notice that while several districts either remained flat or even went down, we are one of several districts, including Yorktown, Putt Valley, North Salem, Maia Park, and Hendrick Hudson, that have gone up. We are at a 20% classification rate. That means one in five of our students has an IEP. Again, that is not, and that doesn't include the students who have 504s. So if you think about all the students that we're trying to manage within a class, there could be several students with IEPs, and then several other students with 504s that may not have a special education teacher or related service listed on their document, but may have accommodations and modifications necessary for their program and testing that the teachers still have to manage. Next, I'd like to review the state indicators. There are 15 of them, nine of which we report on yearly, five of which we only have to do every six years. They are concerned with making sure that our students with IEPs achieve at the same level as their non-disabled peers. So you're going to hear things like graduation rate, dropout rate, how we do on state tests. Is there a discrepancy of students being classified if they are in a minority racial or ethnic group? These first four, you can see in, on the chart, I've posted the New York State criteria, the Somers number, and then whether or not we met criteria. On this first page, two notable things. One, for number three, participation and mastery on state tests. We still have very high dropout rates in our three-to-eight testing for math and ELA, and not so much in science, but even some science. And so in terms of what the state expects for participation, we often do not meet criteria. However, for the, for mastery, those students who take it do achieve a grade level, commensurate with their peers. So that means on state tests, getting a three or a four. And that means on the Regents tests, which are English and algebra to, in order to graduate with a Regents diploma at the high school, they need to get a passing grade or, or have the safety net, which is allowable for students with disabilities. Obviously, at our high school level, we have, we have good test participation rate because those are required for graduation. The other thing of note here, and I apologize, I, I wrote 8.9% for the dropout rate, but then below with the asterisk, I wrote 8.4 by mistake. It is 8.9. You'll notice that our graduation rate and dropout rates are slightly higher than usual. I want you to note that this data is from 2021, the year after COVID, where we were cohorted, students were attending school hybrid every other day. Even though we brought some students in daily, there was impact. Those numbers are higher than we usually have. That represents four students. And our graduation rate is also a bit lower for that year than normal. We're typically at 98 or 99%. So again, I think the, the impact of COVID, I know we're tired of hearing about it, I know we're tired of talking about it, but it is still there and alive and well. State data from the New York State data site is two years in arrears, which is why for these indicators, you see me reporting on 2021 data.
Quick question on the, the participation. I know we do, you know, in a lot of these assessments, there's always a, we have a good amount of opt-outs for it. How is that relation to other schools, or do we have that?
I don't, I don't have information for other schools' opt-out rates, but I think overall in Westchester County, there's a pretty healthy opt-out culture. I think if you look, I think in the paper every year, they, they note the number of students that are opting out, and I think it's a pretty healthy number for the three-to-eight tests.
Now, do they, I don't, is there, I know we always talk about it. Does anybody give reasons as to, has there been research into why we get so many, or there are so many opt-outs? Or is there, well, I just don't want my?
I think for students with IEPs, there, there are a couple of reasons. You know, they take a long time, students are sitting for several hours. For some of our students with special needs, that's particularly difficult. And also, I feel like parents have a lot of other data from their child's special education teacher and the testing that we've already done that's standardized to show where the areas of need are. So they don't, they don't always feel like they need a state test to show them that their child's not achieving a grade level. That's, that's my opinion from a special ed standpoint.
Another question I have, so the graduation rate, have you seen that, since this was from 2021, have you seen that pick increase?
Yes.
Last year and?
Yeah, we picked back up. So when I come back next year and show you the 21, 22, and then 22, 23, you'll, you'll, you'll see that it's picking back up.
And the dropout rate has decreased, too?
Yeah, and some of those students have decided to go on for GEDs or do other things. Or sometimes, like, Westchester Community College has a freshman GED combined program. And so some students after the COVID year were like, I'm out of here, and I'm just going to go do my thing in college. So I think, you know, I don't want you to get a sense that the, the kids are necessarily floundering, but it's just, those are numbers that are different than what we usually see, so I did want to point it out.
Yeah, that, I get that. That's why I was curious, what have you seen since then? So that's reassuring to know.
And Stacy, when you say the graduation rate for this, this is just the kids who would be graduating with their cohort for that year, correct?
Correct.
So if they ended up taking extra time and graduating later, let's say they, you decided to keep them until 20 because they're IEP allowed, it wouldn't be factored in?
Correct. Okay. Correct. Can you hit the next one for me, Chris? Thank you so much. So here are the yearly ones continued. These have to do more with students, number five is school age, number six is preschool, being taught in the least restrictive environment for most of the day. Nine and 10 are disproportionality with being classified and then by classification category. And then the last one is students in CPSC, that's ages three through, I'm sorry, yeah, three through five before they hit kindergarten. The state wants evidence that a document has been transitioned over, and that they, by their third birthday, they have a document for CPSC when they're, when they're getting early intervention services. Once again, you can see the New York State criteria, our numbers, and if we met criteria. Notable here is that our school-age students were not spending the majority of their time in the least restrictive environment. And the reason for that is because, you'll recall, in 2021, we cohorted students, we split them into two classes. And we, that was the year that we had additional TAs and teachers were going across two classrooms in elementary from, for K through six. And then we had students going every other day. We had very strict groups of students, student groupings because of COVID restrictions. So for that year, we did not meet that criteria. But once again, as I come to report to you next year about the following years and coming back, we are back at having the majority of our students spend the majority of their time with their gen ed peers. But again, notable this year because, and that's why, that is the reason.
Is that's more or less consistent with other districts also? Did they, were they challenged in that one?
Yeah, both the graduation and dropout rate numbers and the, the spending time with their gen ed peers were notable across the region. Yep. These are the indicators that are on a rotation every seven, I'm sorry, every six years. Preschool outcomes, they want to see. Preschool outcomes, they want to see students needing less services as they, as they experience early intervention in preschool, and that they are in, if they do need supports, that they're in programs going into kindergarten. Parental involvement is indicator eight in parent involvement in CSC meetings and feeling like they have a voice at the table, which we met criteria. Last year, we had timely evaluations as the criteria. This means from the time we get consent, we have sixty days to evaluate the child and hold a meeting to determine eligibility. And there is a clock within our data system that actually monitors all of that, that is then reported to the state, and once again, we met criteria. And this year, indicator thirteen and fourteen are together. Those are post-secondary and outcomes and secondary transition. Once a student turns fifteen, there are new aspects of their IEP that have to be written together with the team that talk about their goals as, once they, once they hit fifteen, what their goals for post-secondary education might be and what supports the school might put into place. Their interest inventories and different things that students take to help with that. And part of my training with each team, when I go to meetings in January to talk about projections as well as the annual review process, will be reminding my typically eighth through twelfth grade colleagues about this aspect of the IEP, just as a reminder. It's something they do every year, but this is the year we're going to be evaluated on. So before I get to the next slide, is, are there any questions about any of the indic-- I know you sort of were asking along the way, but I'll just pause for a second to make sure there are no questions about indicators. Okay. So the last two slides, I, I want to just highlight, you know, we talked earlier about being at a twenty percent classification rate, but I also want to highlight that the needs of students have increased over time. So what you see on this, you see two graphs. The one on the left is eighteen, nineteen information, the one on the right is five years later, this year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, we went from four hundred eighty-one students to four hundred ninety-two. Not a huge jump, but because overall enrollment is going down, obviously, our percentage of classified students goes up. But what's most notable on this, on these two graphs is, you'll see the orange is the number of students, the green is the number of hours of related service support per month. Obviously, some get more, some get less, but these are on average, how many hours per month students are needing. And if we start at the bottom of these graphs, you can see that for speech, the number of hours that were required per month for each, each, for our students more than doubled. Now, this isn't just, you know, somebody was teasing me earlier, you get services and you get services and you get, no, we, this is a very strategic process. We sit at meetings, we look at testing, we ask teachers what they're noticing in class, we ask parents what they're noticing at home and where children are struggling, and that test data and test information then dictate the level of service, the goals, and how many hours of support are, are necessary to accomplish those goals. So you can see in every single aspect, and these are just related services, right? So we have speech, PT, OT, and counseling. Numbers of students have gone up, but so have the number of hours of service per month pretty drastically. And I just think that's an important thing to highlight because we have, you know, twenty percent of our students classified, but we also have some students with some pretty, some pretty heavy-hitting needs and supports that are necessary. And I, you know, obviously, speech alone, you, you might recall, I brought needing another speech person to, to the table, and that's part of the reason why, is so that we could cover that mandate. The last slide is just some notable things happening this year in special education. We have an increase of skip classes, eight one-two and twelve one-two. That means eight students to one teacher and two teaching assistants, twelve students to one teacher to two teaching assistants. We went from two classes at Primrose last year to three this year. We went from one class at SIS last year to two this year, and next year, we will need one in the middle school. So in two years, we have doubled. We have gone from three to six skip classes. Each of these classes, the students in these classes, the needs are more significant. They require a different level of instruction, more supervision, and sometimes different, you know, different curriculum. So each time a new, a new class of like this is brought on board, it's at least one teacher and two teaching assistants, and then some students have additional behavior or, or health and safety needs that require a one-to-one or a shared aid. So not only are we doubling the number of classes, there's a significant staff impact to that, too, when we bring those classes on board. We have reboot our life subcommittee. We've met one summer meeting again next week. We are looking at creating a parent handbook so that parents can have a better idea of what to expect as they move through buildings. We have a group looking at best practices so that as we look at policy and as we are looking at different things we bring on board for the district, we can know what to keep in mind when thinking about including our students with special needs. And we're also bringing Shelley Moore, who is a guru in inclusive practice, back to visit with us and provide some staff development in March. And so there will be a group planning her time as well. And lastly, we are looking at getting back to some, you know, it's kind of amazing, you know, we know the impact that COVID has had, and it's taken a little while to get back to all our practices and things that we were doing prior to COVID. And so one of the things that we'd like to do is bring back our co-teach class. We have teachers that have been doing co-teach for a long time that provide a class for their colleagues on how to run a classroom that way. It is not as simple as just putting two individuals in a classroom and saying, go teach. There's a lot of organization and planning and different methods of teaching that go into a co-teach classroom. So we want to bring that back online for our teachers and look at ways that we can increase the amount of classes co-teaches provided in. In some instances, that may be looking at it for subjects that we haven't thought of before, six through twelve, or looking at our ratios of students in those classes and making more sections so that it can be a little bit more natural proportions. As I mentioned before, if you have one out of five of your students with an IEP and then several students with a five oh fours in one class, that can be a little challenging to manage. So looking at ratios and how we group students in the schedule is part of our priorities there.
On the co-taught classes?
Yes.
In reference to like the middle school? Do you, I see we're like looking into it. So we, we think about making true co-taught classes for like science and social studies in the middle school?
So that, that is something that we are, we are considering, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. That's a good opportunity, I think, to maybe bring up with the life, life committee and maybe discuss how to go about teacher pairing, maybe? That would be a good topic to bring up with the life committee, if, you know, if that's something you think we could put together.
So, you know, doing any decisions like that take a lot of planning at the building level. So when I, what I, as I mentioned before, in January, what I do is I meet with each teacher individually to talk about their projections for students. Then I talk with the building administrative teams to talk about sort of what they see as their building needs. They're very familiar with their, with their teachers in each building, and we always say that co-teach is like a marriage, right? So the teachers have to be, if, if we're going to move in that direction, it's teachers that have to be both willing to do that, share the responsibility for the class, and know that there's going to be training and then ongoing training and support that needs to happen. It's, it's a big commitment. So it's a, it's sort of a long-term process and a long-term thing to think about, not just for next year, but even, you know, five years out of what, of what we're thinking about and what we're, what we're going to plan for, for all grades, but in particular secondary.
Right, so in Primrose and SIS, we have ICT classes, right?
Correct. And we do in the middle and high school now, too.
Yeah. What is, do you, do you know offhand what the ratio is of student to teacher in Primrose and SIS?
You mean for?
ICT classes.
How many kids have IEPs?
No, what is the ratio of student to teacher? Ratio for, in those classes?
Two teachers and a TA for typically anywhere from twenty to twenty-four students, and at most, half of those students would have IEPs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
But typically, you try not to put like twelve, let's say twelve IEPs in one classroom, if you can help it.
Right, so that gets into, that gets into budgetary concerns, too, right? Because if I only have twelve students?
Right.
Right? Do I, do I put them in one class? Do I, do I think, knowing that may, more kids may become classified over the course of the year, do I start with two? Those are all part of the, that's why I do projections so early in January, and then all through the spring, that's what we talk about at each building.
Just to piggyback off the, the co-teach discussion from six to twelve as well, it might be worth, meant like explaining what is in place now as far as like direct consultant teach and indirect consultant teach, so people have an understanding of what is available.
So right now, at our, so middle school and high school are a little different. Right now, at the middle school level, there are special classes, twelve one-one for, that's twelve students to one teacher, one TA in math and English at all three grade levels. There are co-teach classes in math and English at all three grade levels, and there is a consultant teacher direct where a, where a special ed teacher pushes into the science or social studies class. This year, we've made an improvement in that, that it is daily. It used to be every other day, so now it is, now it is daily. And in some cases, depending on the ratio of students, there's also a TA there so that there can be more small groupings. At the high school right now, in ninth and tenth grade, we have co-teach classes in what I call the Core Four, science, social studies, math, and English. And then in eleventh grade, there are, there are co-teach classes in social studies and English. And then there's a myriad of skill, in, in both buildings, there's a myriad of skills, learning center, those are extra additional support periods, and then, of course, related services.
There's a, there's a difference between direct and direct?
Yes.
And then true co-taught classes?
Yes. So, yeah, do you want me to explain?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, yeah.
So, so, yes, so consultant teacher direct means you are, if you, if I'm a special ed teacher and I'm consultant teacher direct, I am looking at the students' IEPs and the students that have the different goals, and I am helping the gen ed teacher modify materials and accommodate so that those, those accommodations, modifications are done for those students in the class. But I am not, for lack of a better way of saying it, planning every lesson with that teacher, teaching with that teacher, doing station teaching, doing, doing co-teaching, where I may take half the group, you may take half the group. I may take a small group of students to support them during, during a whole group lesson, but it is a little different.
So we don't have true co-taught classes? Is that accurate?
We do.
We, we do.
We have both.
We have both.
Oh, we do?
We have both, yes.
So, yes, so you, what you had been saying was that you have the, the co-taught right now in the middle school in, for ELA?
English and math.
And for math?
Correct.
And then you have the consultant teacher model in place for social studies and science?
Correct.
Okay. And you're looking at adding the co-taught for science and social studies?
We, I'm, I'm talking with the team, I'm in the process of talking with the team about it. We're not, we're not quite there yet, but we're talking with the team about it.
And so I'm seeing with all these changes, you know, as we, as we think ahead to the budget, being aware, it's good for us to have this report and see this, so we know going into it that it looks like special education is going to need more funds for more staffing, if you're going to, with these increases.
Yeah, I really appreciate the chart you wrote, you provided for the increasing needs. It really gives a good depiction, so we have an understanding of, of.
Why don't you just have a visual so you could see kind of where, where we are right now?
The natural proportions you were speaking about?
Mm-hmm.
What is the best ratio? The optimal ratio that we should be having?
It depends. So there are different, typically, what I go by is the, is the state, what, what the state says can be a ratio in a class, right? So if, what the state says that in a co-teach class, no more than half the students should have IEPs. So depending on any given year, I look at what the numbers are, and if, so for example, if there's twenty-four students that with, that are classified that need to co-teach history, I may not do a twelve and a twelve, I may do an eight and eight and an eight. That just makes more sense. It spreads the students out a little bit, and then students with five oh fours are in there, you're not over, you're, you're not over modifying, accommodating, and just one class.
So obviously, it's the lower the student to teacher ratio, the better.
Well, I think, I think everybody would like that, but then we have to balance that with budget, how many teachers we have, how many we need, what the state says. It's a, it's a big balancing act.
And you also have to consider what the goals are of each child on those individual education plans.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking, Stacy, going back to the kind of earlier slide there, I don't know if a week goes by when I'm not either bumping into a new family member to Somaers or a new employee, or somebody's looking to come in that, that's a good portion of the reason why they're looking to the school district is because of the high caliber of the overall program and inclusive of that as a special education program. So as you mentioned before, whilst our overall enrollment has come down a little bit, our numbers are staying pretty, pretty flat as far as those students that need to access the IEP program, so.
Correct.
A lot of things you and the team are doing extremely well, so, and again, I appreciate the conversation here, because there's, there's always like, what's the next right answer?
Yes.
And the fluidity and the flexibility that you're talking about here is exactly what, again, us on the board are trying to best to support, we do, going from, you know, three self-contained instructional programs to six in just, you know, twenty-four months? That's, that's a large ask, and yet, it is the right answer that your team and all the different CSC meetings have identified for us. And so I just commend you, because I know that, you know, it's hard to think, we're thinking about next year of staffing already, it's just January, so, so thank you.
I'm very appreciative to my team. All four buildings, the teams are really very flexible and are always willing to talk with me and problem solve out loud, so I'm, I'm fortunate.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, everyone.
Ray, if you don't mind, actually, I just want to circle back up to this safety and security.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I just, I want to close the loop on a piece of that there, and I should have spoke earlier when that came up, but, you know, first off, and unfortunate, the first responders that, you know, were here are not here anymore, but I do want to thank, you know, anyone that, you know, did respond that day in the expedient, you know, manner that they did. You know, everyone was here quick. You know, unfortunately, or fortunately, it was only a, it was a misfire, you know, of the, of the system, but they did respond extremely quickly, so it's a good test of everything there. Look, I also do want to acknowledge the emotional toll that, you know, from the students that are parents, that everybody went through on that, you know, is, is overwhelming and, you know, probably a lot more than any of us want to deal with, you know, especially those who remember some of the past there. Not only that, you know, the teachers and administrator in the building, I think that was overwhelming. But look, I, I do want to call to attention, I know there's been a lot of conversations with the Security Committee, you know, and the, the group here, and also with the board, getting briefed on some of this here. It has been treated serious, you know, within the administration on taking the steps, right? And there is a balance in making a quick change and having people educated on how to actually implement that change, along with the balance on, you know, the sensitivity as the, sorry, the simplicity of implementing this to implementing it overly complex, right? And dealing with that complexity in a stressful manner. So it is a little bit a game and not something that we can do too swiftly, while it seems technically simple or something.
Yes.
Swiftly, even with the advisement of the, the state police and the security councils that we have, you know, they've also advised us not to change swiftly. But change has been, you know, decided, and that is being implemented now. The board has also been debriefed on that change, right? While we're not going to go into specifics of the actual change, I can say, you know, it's, I'm confident in the change, right? To avoid these type of mishaps in the future. It does sound like it's a reasonable enough complexity, right? Again, to avoid these mishaps going forward, and enough simplicity, hopefully, right? In the event of that stressful situation, that we still allow our teachers and administrators to make that call. With that, too, is, you know, look, I know the parties that have made this, that made the mistake are deeply regretful of that, of that change and emotional about it themselves. You know, I also want to acknowledge that I won't support any, you know, discipline of them, right? Because I don't want to create fear in anybody in actually pushing that button, right? Because that delay is going to cause risk to our kids, right? So I don't want anybody to ever be, feel fearful, you know, if they do make that decision. I want to avoid the mistakes, but I don't want them to be fearful in pushing that button. But anyway, I just wanted to share that piece of it there and a little bit about, you know, again, my observation as a board, and I think talking with the other board members, their observation of the changes there and the, the confidence in, in what's about to come over the next couple of weeks to hopefully avoid this mishap going forward.
Thanks.
If I can, I'm on the Safety Committee. You know, we spoke about, you know, there were mistakes made, you know, hands down on those three incidences, but what's good to come out of those mistakes is a learning, you know, you're learning how to make things better. I think we had a very productive meeting last week of things that can be changed, that can be done to avoid these mistakes. I mean, thank God, there were mistakes and, you know, there were false alarms, which is, we're thankful for, but out of that meeting, we did, it was very productive, and these type of things shouldn't be happening again, so. It was very productive, and Dan's a good guy, he knows what he's doing.
Great.
I'm just going to add on to that, because I happen to be in, out of two of those three, I was in the buildings. I'm just going to add on to that, because I happen to be in, uh, two of those three, I was in the buildings on those. The children and the faculty did exactly what they have been training to do, uh, the drills that Dan has talked about. So no, we would not want to do that again. Yet out of that, we saw that the training is working. The students, adults, and faculty did what they need to do as far as making sure they follow the appropriate protocol, so. So again, thank you for time on, on the committee there.
Yeah, yeah.
And working it through, and again, acknowledging the fact that, yes, our, our faculty take this very, very seriously. We want to make sure that we encourage them. If there is something there they need to know, that we're going to go ahead and ask them to activate the alarm, so, thank you.
Great. Yeah, just to reiterate, there, there definitely is going to be more training.
Yes.
Um, that's involved in the decisions that we made, so, uh, that will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we'll go to the 24-25 calendar draft.
24-25 calendar, we're talking about already, huh? Look at it. And so this is the draft, we try to get this out in January, uh, as quick as we can. So Chris will go ahead and pull this up. A couple of changes this year, again, each year, depending upon what some of those holidays fall, uh, changes the overall calendar piece. So if you go ahead and look at, we do have one new piece. If you look at January 29th, the state for this year did, uh, add the Lunar New Year as a new state holiday, uh, for us in education. And so it actually happened this year, but it fell on the weekend this year, so it did not impact our calendar. Next year it does. The second other piece also that I anticipate will be moving forward, if you may recall, just a few, uh, years ago, that in, uh, Juneteenth was added as a, another holiday. So basically, the end of the school year now is, is on the 27th of June. So that school calendar has stretched out a little bit because now these additional holidays are taking place during the school year. So for what, uh, what that means for us is we will go ahead and we have our professional learning days. Not every district does this, again, with a, uh, you know, just our, uh, school, school, our Somers Faculty Association, all our teachers, we work in partnership to have those two days ahead of the start of school actually, uh, start with us. That's very, very helpful for the other things that we do in the calendar. If we had to put those blue days during the school year, that just creates a little bit more, uh, trouble with making the calendar kind of fit, so I appreciate that support with our teacher association. So with that, then we'll start on the third, uh, as you look at the holidays for Rashishani Malakapur uh, next year, as, what those will be on the calendar. Uh, the November is another change. We have, uh, continued to look at, for a number of years, we have had the election day on Tuesday, the 5th, as a student contact day. Uh, we are looking in, and I know in some other schools, there's have done that too, is moving that to a professional learning day. Uh, as mandated by us, the schools have to be used as a polling place. And so, uh, and typically, our polling numbers increase in those presidential elections and things like that. So, uh, back to safety and security, back to more things in school. It just kind of presents itself as, we'll have, you know, obviously, our SROs and everything will be here, but without students, that allows us easy access into the gymnasium that we have in the middle school. So that's a change that we'd have made now. Um, and then as we look at the Veterans Day and then the break for Thanksgiving, then you can go ahead and see December, uh, next year with that December, there'll be two weeks off there, um, for the December, uh, and then a closing on the January 3rd date there. What, that really allows, do that back to the blue days, by doing those ahead of time, then we can make that take place. And then again, now June, uh, or not June, January 29th with the Lunar New Year. February, we still have that week, and again, these align to our colleagues in the BOSIS area. We try to have those calendars aligned as much as feasibly possible. And then April, you will see, again, there with a break in, in that alignment there. And then in May, we will have the Monday followed by a professional learning day on that Tuesday at the end of the month. And then as I mentioned before, with June, so. Uh, this is our calendar sits right now. Um, I, uh, we just got information that 27th is going to be the last day of state testing for regions next year, so I do not anticipate any changes moving forward. So, um, the state is talking about, at a state level, the city has made some changes for other holidays that will go in. So, uh, I don't see anything next year, but if that transpires, then that will obviously have an impact on our calendar in subsequent years, so. Any questions on this one or anything, so?
Just to be clear though, like basically, the state gives you the last day and the first day, and you have to squeeze 180 days of student contact days in between, right? So.
Way better said than I said, yes? Exactly. Sorry, I extended the meeting.
No, no, I, I just wanted to.
There's the bookends, yep, you're right, uh, yes, thank you. And, and they've extended those out a little bit, so thank you. Yeah.
And, and we'll continue to have snow days as snow days as opposed to remote learning days. I know some districts have gone that route, and that is not what we've chosen in the past.
What, what we've seen is we'll have those three, I'll, I'll call them just emergency-related weather, because our first one this year was just, you know, uh, trees falling, not taking out the power. Um, hopefully, nothing happens tonight. And so the reality is, yes, we'll have that. What we clearly have seen is that to try to ramp that up, to have that be much value, it's just, it's just not there. If it goes beyond that, then, then that's where we will try to look at, as at the bottom of the calendar. The first day we would pull back is on that May 27th day. So if we need to do that, we'll do that in person. Just the, the living through this experience for a fair amount of time, that distance learning and those pieces, especially for our youngest learners, is, is very difficult. And asking faculty to keep a system up and ready to run, like turn it on tomorrow, that may never be used is, is really, uh, not probably the most prudent use of teacher resource time and things. So we'll do the three days if we need them. After that, we'll start peeling away from the, the calendar, so. Thank you very much for clarifying that, Stacy.
Oh, no, good, I, I agree with the approach, I like it.
Thanks. Going up in the Northeast, you gotta wear the spoon at night, you have to once in a while. Hope it's no day tomorrow, right? So, so, thank you.
I can't find any of my wooden spoons in the house. All right. That's it.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, we'll go on to public comment. If we have public comment, I'll read it. All right. No public comment, board member comment.
Uh, yeah, just going back on what Nick said with the security team here. Uh, and I know with the false alarms, uh, people got a little upset about it, but, uh, to be honest, I'd rather have false alarms than have teachers and faculty hesitant on doing something. Uh, so, uh, you know, and I spoke with Pat and the security team, it looks like they're doing everything, everything right to make sure those don't happen and make sure, you know, we have the proper channels to get things done right, and there isn't hesitation should a real event happen, so. Uh, you know, I feel pretty confident in everything that, uh, that's been done since then.
I, I concur, I'm also on the safety.
Just, just so everybody knows, so they're a little bit more comfortable. It's not, it wasn't really, it was a human error. It wasn't a breakdown of the system that's in place, and pretty much all the occasion was human error. So moving forward, there's going to be more, like I said, there's going to be more training to make sure these things don't happen, there's going to be other things to put in place to make sure these things don't happen. So all in all, the procedure of how it's done, it's a good procedure. It's just, obviously, needs some tweaking, so human error doesn't get involved and make these things happen unnecessarily. So like I said, that training is forthcoming.
Just saying, yeah, thanks for the safety report tonight, for that, that update. Um, that's one thing, I've kind of watched evolve over, you know, since 2018, and I'm proud of everything that we've got in place for the safety and security of our students. And I think we all know, any kind of alarm that you have, there's always going to be chances that you have an accidental trigger. Um, so at least we had an opportunity to make, to find out that the response works. So that's good, and, and I'm confident that it's addressed going forward. Um, and thank you, um, for the special ed update too. I think, and that heads up, it always helps as we're thinking budget, to know where are we going to need to be creative and what are we going to need to consider. So, um, thank you for that information and the, you know, updates on responsiveness to our student needs.
I'm just going to reiterate, thank you for the, for the update on security. I think it was really important, I'm confident in the plan. Um, as Nick said, we've been debriefed and, you know, there's, oh, even if it is an accident, the police are always going to show up, right? And they're never not going to show up and they're going to follow protocol, so, um, I think that's worth noting. And thank you, um, to Stacy for putting together the report, that was really useful information. We have our citizens finance committee meeting hopefully tomorrow, if there's no delay. So that, that's, just helps for having that kind of numbers, because, um, it's, it's, it's a good portion of the budget of just, you know, having that staffing and the resources, and we want to make sure the kids are supported and the teachers are supported, um, to provide all the services, so thank you. And happy new year to everybody, welcome back to another great year.
Go ahead. I'm good?
Uh, yeah, just last piece, uh, as we start next, or two weeks from tonight, we'll start with the introduction to the budget cycle. As we know, we start with the non-instructional side. So when we meet in two weeks, we'll be kind of walking through that non-instructional side, and when we do meet with the citizens finance committee, that's a nice feedback loop for us to go ahead and get as we're thinking about walking it out in two weeks. So, um, we'll be doing that, and we'll, we'll start with that, and then start shifting into the instructional side and move it forward, so, well, thank you.
All right. With that. That's it, right?
Yeah.
That's it. All right. Uh, let it resolve this, uh, the special, uh, meeting with workshop with the Board of Education, be adjourned.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Thank you, drive safe.